Hi, I'm Regina Ayers and I'm the host of Girl Talk. For those of you that are new to Girl Talk, Girl Talk showcases women who are making a difference in their communities here in the Rogue Valley. It is a lively discussion of the opportunities, successes, and challenges that women face in their daily lives. It is election season 2020 and I am interviewing the women in the Rogue Valley who are running for elected office. I'm interviewing 14 of the women, but that's not all the women that are running for office. There are women running against men and women running against women. There's so many women that are running and I'm so amazed that they are stepping up to take on what it means to run a campaign and to win an election. During the filming of the interviews, the catastrophic fires in Talent in Phoenix took place on September 8th. You will see in the interviews that some of the women were asked about the fire and others were not. And some of the women were not able to reschedule. I wish all the candidates the very best in their campaigns. Let's get started. My first guest today is Teri Martin and Teri is running for county commissioner in Jackson County. Welcome, Teri.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, well, on the website, I was looking at some of the information, some background information on Jackson County. First of all, it's a large county.
Huge.
There's 221,000 people that live here and the breakdown was 80% urban and 20% rural, which kind of surprised me. I would think it would be not even, but different than that. So you've got a couple of large cities here in Jackson County. So interesting, it said that 10% of the people here, so that's about, you know, 30,000 people, or no, 20,000 people don't have health insurance. And 11% are female-led households, which is of interest to us. And then 15% are below the poverty line. So that's 30,000 people. And that would include, I'm assuming, the unhoused population that we really have in Medford and Ashland. I don't know so much about Talent and Phoenix, but yeah, it's a problem.
The statistics on that, the three most vulnerable populations, the ones in the poverty list are women between the ages of 20 and 25, women between the ages of like 40 and 50, and women between the ages of like, you know, 25 and 30. So the biggest pop, yeah, yeah, those are the biggest populations in poverty in Jackson County.
That are vulnerable here, yeah. Well, they just don't have the resources they need, you know, really. And they're raising kids, I'm sure. Okay, let's go into the first question. So I read your bio and you and your family seem to be pretty much locals and...
50 years.
How many years?
50.
50 years, my goodness, that's a half a century. And your parents came and bought a farm and you're a businesswoman. You own the Harley-Davidson dealership that's in Phoenix?
Yeah.
Your family owns it?
Mm-hmm.
Great, so you've got that background, great. And you were politically engaged with Indivisible, ORD2. And so what, how do you think that makes you a better candidate, being a local gal?
I think living here for 50 years, I've seen the valley through the eyes as a student, as I was an instructor at SOU for 25 years, as a parent of two children, and as a businessperson, has been really helpful in getting to know the population of Jackson County. Plus, I was a reporter for the Mail Tribune for 14 years and interviewed probably thousands of people. I feel like I'm more in touch with the people who live here, who are the people that don't necessarily show up for county commissioner meetings, the people that aren't movers and shakers in the community. I feel like I've got a better feel for the pulse of the people who live here.
Well, you mentioned you're a journalist and one of the lines in there says that you give gay voice to people. And so as a commissioner, how will you give voice to the people that you were just talking about, the average person?
I think for one thing, you have to start diversifying the people that are serving on committees for Jackson County. I think a lot of times, it's the same circle of people that all hang out together that are on these committees. And I think you're going to have to form commissions of people and coalitions of people who are on the ground, working with people on the issues that people care about in Jackson County. So I think there's that. And I also think that we need to get out of the building more. The county commissioners are pretty much locked into that building most of the time. They're not out there in the world trying to talk to people about what's important to them. So I tend to think that as a reporter, I like, if there's an issue like homelessness, I'd like to get out on the greenway and talk to those people and find out, you know, why are you there? What can we do to help you? And get more in touch with the people that are out there.
Well, you know, I never, lots of candidates have town hall meetings and gatherings, but I don't think I've ever heard of the commissioners having something comparable to a town hall meeting. Do they do that?
It's been sporadic over the years. Some of it, some of them have done that, some of them have done it for a while and then stopped. Although remember that town hall meetings are once again attended by people who are really interested in politics. And sometimes those are not necessarily the people that need the services that Jackson County provides. Because Jackson County is responsible for the overall health of the county, whether it be environmental health, mental health, public health. The COVID-19 crisis is in their ball court, so to speak. So if you wait for people to come to a town hall or wait for them to come to one of your meetings, the number of people that can actually fit that into their schedule or make it a priority is really small.
So how are you going to do it differently?
Well, what I'd like to do, like I said, is to kind of create some coalitions of people that get to get together. If there's a specific issue that everybody wants to talk about, let's find the players, let's find people that are impacted by it, let's bring them all together in one room with the different organizations that are trying to help them and have this conversation. And then plus, get out of the building and actually go talk to people as often as possible. And then be transparent about it. Because right now, we're living in a time where there isn't much local journalism, to be honest with you. We used to have a full-time reporter that covered the county at all times. Now it's very sporadic. And so what happens is that the county is working on issues and doing work, but no one knows what they do until the Mail Tribune, for example, decides once every couple of months to do a story on what they're deciding. So there has to be some reporting out as well.
So they don't have somebody that goes to every county commission meeting? No. Yeah, it's a problem. It is. And I feel so fortunate that here in Ashland, we have our, still have our own daily paper. And I hope that continues, but it's changing.
Yes.
New owners.
It's owned by the Mail Tribune. It is the Mail Tribune.
Well, sometimes the copy overlaps each other. You read one thing here...
Exactly, they're all working at the same building.
I know, I know. But I'm glad we have the Ashland tidings.
Absolutely.
So you have been active, I don't know if you actually started Indivisible, ORD2. Were you the founder of that?
No, it was founded by Jessica Sage and Brett Leveque. And they founded it in January, right after the Indivisible Guide came out. I read it on the same day that they did, like, oh my gosh, there's exactly what we need to do. And so I kind of came into it a couple of weeks after them, but I was on the ground floor and have been on the steering committee and the board ever since.
So all that you've learned doing that work, and that's been two years now, no, it's been four years?
Four years.
Four years, that's a lot of on-the-ground experience. So what have you learned in that effort that you're taking into your campaign?
I've learned that a lot of people don't understand how government works. And so this has been a civics lesson for them. And that's pretty much what we've done as Indivisible. People think of us as the people out there on the corner waving signs because that's the real visible part. But a lot of what we've done is to teach people about how does your government work? Who is your congressman? Who represents you on the state level? Who represents you on the county level? Are they doing the work that you want them to do? And if they're not, then how do you hold them accountable? What mechanisms, what tools do you have to say, hey, you're not representing me? Or, hey, you're doing a great job and I want you to know that? And people didn't know that they could write letters, that they could call the offices, that they could stop in and talk to the staff. And so a lot of this has been teaching people about how to get closer to government and hold people accountable. And so I tend to think that that's going to help me as a county commissioner as well because I hope they hold me accountable when I'm elected. I hope that, you know, they tell me if I'm doing a good job or not. But you need people to be more in touch with what's happening because I'll just say that during the eight years of Obama, I think of a lot of the people that were on the blue side of things, just kind of got laid back and said, everything's fine, you know, we don't have to fight. It's all good, everything's happening the way we want it to. Nobody needs to write a letter or talk to your congressman. And so all of that became a very, a real civics lesson in 2017.
Well, they don't teach civics in school anymore.
No, they don't.
I remember in seventh and eighth grade, I very well remember my civics teacher. And they've cut that out of the curriculum now. And I know there's an effort of trying to get it back in, but you know, of course, we have a real budgetary issue now, so.
Yeah, a friend of mine who is politically active in Indivisible in another county, he's homeschooling, of course, has three kids because COVID, right? And one of his assignments, he's given them is to like, listen to the candidates. I want you to listen to these, you know, different talks and then tell me what are the issues you think that they touched on and how did it make you feel? And if, you know, how would you vote? How would you decide to vote? I think parents have a great opportunity to teach civics right now.
They do.
It's a good time.
Okay, this is a pretty standard question that I'm asking all the candidates. So if you're elected, what are your top three priorities going to be?
There are so many issues that I could, I'll have to choose. I think one of the most important things for Jackson County right now is affordable housing. I think that people are not able to pay for the property taxes, some of the seniors that live in our community. We don't have enough houses for working families that are affordable. If you look at the amount that it costs to buy a house in either Ashland or Talent right now, it's very similar to what you might pay in DC or LA. And we don't make those kind of salaries. So that's got to be something that we address.
So question there. So you're talking about housing, you know, affordable rents and able to purchase, but we have a pretty, the statistics, 15% below the poverty line, so a good percentage of those are unhoused people.
Correct.
So how can you address our unhoused slash homeless?
That's my issue number two.
Oh, okay, good.
Issue number two is that we have a huge homeless population. And people see the tents on the greenway and think that's them and they do the homeless count once a year and come up with like 700 people. What you don't realize, I did a story for Ms. Magazine years ago, talking about women and homelessness. And women who are homeless aren't sitting in a tent on the greenway. They are with their parents one night, they may be on a friend's couch the next, they're in a shelter the next, in the back to their abuser. Homelessness is having an unstable weight, I mean, I guess you don't have a roof over your head in a stable way. So there's a huge population of homeless women in this community that aren't being counted. There's a huge population of homeless students, both at the high school level and maybe even the middle school level, as well as the college level. When I taught at SOU, I knew students that were sleeping in their cars, students that would take classes late at night so that, or take jobs like at the library so they could stay there and not be out in the cold. It's just a huge population that the greenway is just the teeny-tiny tip of. And so I tend to think that's going to be an issue we need to deal with. How we deal with that? We're going to have to find out individually what has caused this person to be homeless because opening up a campground is a great, awesome start for those people on the greenway. But how are you going to help the women that are surfing from couch to couch? How are you going to help the students? And then each of those people have their own story as to how they got there. It might have been a family issue, it might have been a spouse issue, it might have been a job issue that somebody lost their job and is now can't afford rent. So each one of those people has a different story and may have a different solution. Up in Portland, they just passed a measure in the spring that puts together this network that is going to look at homeless people from an individual perspective. And so I'm going to be watching that to see how successful that is. The other part of that is there are people that are homeless because of mental health, substance abuse, and poverty. And those are issues that are very, very much related to homelessness. Our response to those people when they've had a mental health crisis or substance abuse crisis is to send the police. And that can work sometimes, but there are other programs that are more effective, that save money, and that are more compassionate for those instances.
Well, I know you've talked about cahoots. You want to tell the audience what that's about?
Yeah, cahoots is a program that started in Eugene 30 years ago through the Whitebird Clinic. And the Whitebird Clinic was helping homeless people in downtown Eugene. And so they decided that when someone was having a mental health crisis, rather than sending the police out with handcuffs and no place to take them, that they would send out basically the people that were medically trained as well as the mental health care worker. And that has developed into, 30 years later, a complete staff of 50, a fleet of vehicles. And they now respond to 20% of the 911 calls that come in to Eugene and Springfield. And they come, they work with the person, they try to figure out what the problem is, they try to find the best place for them to be in a much more compassionate way. And it's getting a lot of interest right now across the country because of people talking about, let's say, reimagining policing. If we could, you know, allow our police to do the jobs they're trained to do, which is to solve crimes. And we could perhaps come to the understanding that homelessness is not a crime, poverty's not a crime, having a mental health crisis is not a crime, right? So I think that if we were able to create a program like that here in Jackson County, we would save money and have a much better success rate with those people. That said, I don't think I'd advocate for it to be part of Jackson County underneath the Jackson County budget, only because then you risk someone taking funds away or not believing in the program and it becomes political.
Yes. So where would it reside then?
I'd like to see it be part of a nonprofit, possibly an existing nonprofit, that already has the infrastructure to work with people that are disadvantaged, already has the infrastructure to raise money and deal with grants. And then I think that it would save enough money across the county that the Jackson County as well as the cities would be able to pay into it to help support it.
Great, great. So that was two priorities. Do you have a third?
I would say land use.
Land use, okay.
Only that people don't realize that Jackson County is in charge of all of those lands in between all the cities. And so my parents moved here in 50 from San Jose because when they had arrived there 13 years earlier, it was beautiful orchards and agriculture and farms. And then in the 13 years they lived there, it became this giant sprawl where you never knew whether you left San Jose and, you know...
I lived in the Bay Area, so I know.
Yeah, so it became this giant city and all the orchards were knocked down, et cetera. Jackson County is in charge of deciding which lands will remain agricultural and open and which ones will be developed. And I think that it's really important to the livability of where we are, that we make good decisions in that way.
And retain agricultural land in that.
Absolutely.
So I know there's lots of, well, you've got hemp now.
Yes.
That's taking over the vineyards, who took over the orchards. So it's, everything changes.
Yeah, but it's important to maintain that it's agricultural land.
Right.
Where I live, out in the Phoenix-Talent foothills, for example, there are three orchards within a few miles of my house that have been knocked down and there are houses going up in space of orchards.
Yeah.
Which to me...
That's zoning.
That's a zoning issue. And people forget sometimes, I mean, people love their city councils and their mayors and they love to get involved with city politics and they forget sometimes that they're also governed by the Jackson County commissioners and the zoning laws and everything. And what's, what's, happens right outside their city limits should interest them and they should have a voice in. And they forget sometimes they have a voice in county government.
Now, the county commission, Jackson County commission consists of three commissioners. I know there's been discussion about more commissioners, but we're not going to talk about that. So two commissioners that are on there now that are running for reelection or...
In two years.
Oh, in two years they'll be, so you're the only one that's actually open seat?
That's correct.
Anyway, they're Republicans. And they may be not quite as progressive as yourself. So how do you, assuming you get elected, how are you going to work with these two people that may have very different approaches to solving problems?
It will be a challenge. It's one I think I'm up to. I've actually been part of a family-owned business for the last 30 years, run by my parents for the first few years, and then my two sisters and I on equal footing in that dealership. And so I think, and we don't always agree on everything and often have totally different ideas on how to do things. So I'm pretty good at working within a group and I think that part of it is going to be having a voice up there. Right now, it's a Neco chamber with three Republicans and so they pick their issues, they pick what they want to do about it, they just decide and they keep going and no one is actually bringing up any type of other voice, other ideas, creative solutions. And I think that that's going to be the role that I'm going to play. And I may get outvoted on a regular basis, but I won't be without at least presenting some solutions that perhaps they hadn't thought of before.
Great. So how do you intend to, another powerful position in Jackson County is Danny Jordan's position. So how do you intend to work with him?
Well, I know Danny. I was also involved with the Southern Oregon Historical Society when they took away all the funding back in the 90s. I was on the board for 10 years. And so I've known Danny since that time. He also rides a Harley, so I know him as a customer as well.
Oh, you've got, you've got something in common.
Yeah, so I think that Danny is actually an incredibly smart person.
He is.
He's very good at what he does, but he works for the commission. And so what's happening now is if you have three people that totally agree and if he's agreeing with them, then it just kind of all goes the way they want it to go. I just think we'll manage it differently. I mean, if, if he's instructed to do something a different way, then he needs to do it a different way. But like I said, he does a very good job of managing the county and doing what the commission wants him to do. And so I would just hope that we can change the goals of the commission so that he does things a little differently.
He has a new direction.
Yes.
Absolutely. Okay, next question. As I mentioned before, 10% of the population of the county, which is about 20,000 people, are without health insurance. And I know we have the Oregon Health Plan and all I hear is that that is a good program. So how are you going to get the rest of those people covered with medical insurance?
It may not be up to the Jackson County commissioners to do that, of course. I mean...
Okay, explain that then.
Well, the expansion of the Affordable Care Act came from Congress. And then the, the cutbacks came from Congress and from the current administration. So we may have to rely and lobby for people in Congress to expand that act to cover everyone again. Oregon's been pretty well at covering people. In addition to that, we have community health centers, La Clinica, places where people can go. But inevitably, what you find is people who don't have healthcare, who don't have insurance will wait until something is so bad that they end up at an ER, in which case they could have, something they could have prevented a month ago, a week ago, an hour ago, becomes a very serious issue. And so we've got to do a couple of things. Need to find insurance for them. We also need to educate them on how to get to care earlier and get prenatal care, for example, as well as treatment for like diabetes early or for heart conditions or high blood pressure. So a lot of that's going to be education with people and trying to find resources for them to get that treatment ahead of time to be able to prevent. I'm all about preventing these horrible, you know, medical crises with all the bills that come with it. I mean, one medical catastrophe and it puts a lot of these people into that poverty position. So I think that if we look at it from a preventative standpoint, we're going to be far ahead of the game.
So is the healthcare here in Jackson County covered by community care centers? Is that, is that the group of people that are doing that?
There's two divisions. The Jackson County Health Department is run through the Jackson County budget.
Okay.
And then the mental health division is run through CCOs, which are private.
Okay, CCOs, I got it, yeah.
Yeah, which is a whole different thing. It's a way of saving money, I think. It's giving it to a profitable organization or somebody, it's letting go of it and having somebody else run it instead of Jackson County. Jackson County did that with the libraries, right after, they closed it for a year and then after that, they reopened it with a private company that ran our libraries. They were Jackson County libraries, but they were run by a private company. And then there were people that loved the library so much that they got together, formed a district, got the vote, and were able to save it and bring it back. But the wonderful thing about that is that that district is no longer a part of the Jackson County budget. Jackson County commissioners cannot take the money away from the libraries now. So people were talking about possibly doing a district for a cahoot-style program as well. But I think in times of COVID right now, the thought of anyone raising tax issues right now, it's going to be a long time before anyone's going to vote any new taxes in.
Well, we haven't talked about the climate, climate crisis. And we're going to be going through a very hot spell here this week, over 100 for an extended period of time. So what, you know, what can Jackson County do about addressing, the cities are taking a look at it, at least Ashland is. So what can the county do?
The first step is to establish a county climate action plan so that we know what we need to do to become more reliable on sustainable energies.
Who would be represented on that planning commission?
Well, you'd probably try to pull in people from like SOCAN and some other organizations.
And that stands for?
Southern Oregon Climate Awareness and NOW. And so there's different organizations in the valley that have been working on climate change and have been approaching the county commissioners to see what they would do and asked for a climate action plan and have not gotten it yet. So I tend to think that that's going to be something crucial because if we don't solve this problem, then all the other problems pale in comparison, right? So that's part of it. The other part of it is to, for example, encourage solar, maybe start giving great credits and great planning assistance on people, for people who are developing their houses or businesses and making sure that solar is a part of it so that we can start using less energy in that way.
So that would be construction that's outside of the city limits, but is in the Jackson County incorporated area?
Right. The other thing we could do is the county should lead by example. It should do a complete energy audit of its entire system. It should look at the types of vehicles it's using. It should look at the type of energy being used by the buildings, if they're energy efficient. Is it possible that they could institute solar and other types of sustainable energy programs in the county buildings? It's also looking at practices. Something as small as leaving all the computers on overnight. If Jackson County has 200 computers within its system, is it okay to leave 200 systems on, if the computers on all night, every night, all across the county? Or how much energy is that using? How many times are we paying people to make multiple trips to someplace and use that much more energy to go places when they could be carpooling or whatever? So there's a lot of things that we could do if we start looking at the issues of the county through the lens of the climate crisis.
So would you have representatives from the cities on that commission?
I think you should put together a whole coalition of people, yeah.
Right, yeah.
Definitely.
Well, we haven't talked about criminal justice. And one of the big issues this year was the bond measure for a jail, a new jail with, I don't know, 800, 900 beds, which was, seemed to be a concern for people. Do we need a jail that that's big? And so what's your feeling on the existing jail? I have never been there, so I hear it really needs some upgrades and it's too small, apparently. It's about 320 beds or something like that. So why don't you tell us a little bit, your feelings about criminal justice and jailing people?
Okay. The jail, I understand, is too small. It's reached its capacity. And my question is, should we start looking at who we are incarcerating? Is it necessary for every single person that's picked up on the streets to have to go to jail? We've talked about cahoots and the program of being able to deter someone instead of, if they're, if they're walking home drunk or if they are having a mental health crisis, you know, they automatically are put into the jail. There's no other place to put them until a bed is available, for example, at Asante, at Rogue, at the hospital there. So it may be that if we start looking at how we treat these people and how we work with them when we find them out there on the street, that that may reduce some of the people that we take to jail. Now, it may be that we need to add more beds, and that's very possible. How that's done is open to question, but what they were proposing was $170 million.
I know, plus the land.
Plus the land. They'd already spent $6 million on the land. And they were going to spend, I think, $60 million out of the rainy day fund. And people's property taxes were going to go up 40%. And people's property taxes were going to go up 40%.
Yeah.
And so to me, it was completely out of touch with what people want in Jackson County, and a better way to do things. So I, you know, I'm not surprised that it went down in March. I think it would be a long time before people would actually approve it. And I would just hope that perhaps they've got the message on the board, and that they can start looking at it from a different perspective.
So would Danny George, who would have authorized the purchase of that land prior to...
Continue having the approval?
Yeah.
Board of Commissioners.
So they approved that. What would be their rationale behind that?
I don't know. To be honest with you, I don't know. I mean, I think they were so sure that they needed the land and that they were going to be able to do this. Now, my fear, to be honest with you, is that there may be a way for them to do it without a vote of the people.
To build the jail?
Yeah, to build a jail out there, maybe not as large as they want, but since they've already bought the land, finding ways within the parameters of what the county can spend to build another jail.
Would that come out of the general fund somehow, or?
Yeah, yeah. And I think, from what I understand, I think the county commissioners are able to spend a certain percentage of the budget without, you know, without prior approval. So I don't know. I'm still looking at all the logistics of it, but I think we should all be very wary. It gets back to our indivisible mentality, in that we want to hold our people accountable for what they do, and keep a close eye on them, and on the decisions that they make. And we should all be paying close attention to what they do next.
Well, I've been to a couple of county commission meetings in the old...
Courthouse?
Courthouse.
Yeah.
There's never anybody there.
Yeah.
Really. And I know, this is another problem, is it's at noon. Who, other than retired people, can come to a meeting at noon?
Well, I had proposed once in a discussion I was in with someone, and they had said, well, you should have them in the evenings, right? And then I said, you know what? If you're a single mom, and you've been working all day, or maybe you're part of a family, and you've come home, and you've got the kids, and you've got to make dinner, who's going to go at 7? I mean, it's going to take a really compelling issue for you to show up at a county commission meeting. It's going to be something personal to you, that where you think you can make a difference for you to show up. So what's happening is no one's showing up. Partly because those issues don't feel quite so close to home, partly because they're not advertised. We don't know what they're talking about. There's no, I'm sure they put an agenda on their page, but how many of us are going to go to the Jackson County website every week to see what they're talking about this week? Then they have other meetings that are work sessions. There's a work session on Tuesday, where they get together and talk about things, and then they make their decision on Wednesday. So do you go to both Tuesday, would you hear them talk about the issues, and then show up for Wednesday for the decision? I mean, there's another one on Thursday where they continue...
Time-consuming.
Yeah. People don't have time for this.
Work people do not.
No, so...
They really don't. That's why it's so, how do we get younger people civically engaged? It's a real challenge.
It is. It's a huge challenge. Just getting them to vote is a challenge. They're all registered through the new Motor Voter Act for Oregon, so they're registered, but getting them to actually make that step to put the vote in, you know, their ballot in the ballot box is a huge step for them.
And we actually gave them stamps this year.
I know.
So, well, listen, thank you.
You're welcome.
Well, we've come to the end, so I'd just like to know if you have any closing comments that you might like to make to the audience?